Good evening. I am calling to order tonight's Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Wolf, will you call the first roll of 2020?
Commissioner Metcalf?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Bandow?
Thank you. At this point in every meeting, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. If you have something to say that is besides what we're supposed to talk about, you have three minutes to say so. And seeing that no one is going to take advantage of that, we'll close the public comment section. We'll head right into our first and only hearing item tonight. This is a new hearing for 155 Summit Drive. This is a design review application, PL 2019-0076, and variance application, PL 2019-0077, for the demolition of an existing two-story residence and the construction of a new 2,972 square foot, three-story residence with a 452 square foot attached garage and a variance to exceed maximum lot coverage and reduce minimum side yard setback requirements at 155 Summit Drive. Has everybody been up to the site or not?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I have.
All right. Thank you. Margaret?
Yes.
I mean Martha.
Good evening, Chair Chase, members of the Commission. This evening, you'll be considering a design review and variance application for a new three-story residence at 155 Summit Drive. The project site is located within the Christmas Tree Hill overlay district. There are two residences located adjacent to the project site. Located to the north is 159 Summit Drive. Then this property is set across the fire access road and is elevated above the project site. And located to the, to the north is 151 Summit Drive. And to the east is an undeveloped landlocked parcel. And then to the south is open space. And the project site slopes down in an easterly direction. And the Marin maps lists the average, the average slope at 51 percent. And this aerial shows the residence, 155 Summit Drive. This is the existing residence on the site. And you can see the surrounding residences. And then also, you can see there's a variety, a large amount of tree canopy, both to the east and to the south of the project site. The existing site has an existing home that was built in the early 1930s. It's a two-story structure that is approximately 900 square feet. It includes a deck and a retaining wall with a lower landscaped area. And the picture on the left shows the existing structure. And then on the right, this is Lower Summit Fire Trail. On the left of this picture is the fence along the property. And you can see there's an entrance gate. And then if you continue on the road, it is a, of access through open space. And then on the right is the, an existing retaining wall, and then 159 Summit is located above. Ah. Sorry. The minimum lot size for these parcels is 20,000 square feet. However, the project site is 8,581 square feet. And the current structure is non-conforming in regards to the south side setback. The current structure is located two feet, six inches from the south property boundary. And it's also non-conforming in regards to parking. The zoning ordinance requires two parking spaces, and there are currently zero onsite parking spaces. And the proposed project is consistent, meets the setback requirements for the front and rear yard, in addition to floor area, structure, height, and parking. However, variances are being requested for both side yard setbacks, in addition to lot coverage. And the Planning Commission held a preliminary review informational study session on August 13th, 2019. And since that time, several changes have been made to the project. The building was shifted closer to the street, approximately eight inches. Landscape plan has also been developed, in addition to a grading and drainage plan. And based on feedback received at the meeting, several changes were made to the height. The foyer roof was reduced 12 inches. The garage ceiling was reduced 12 inches. The lower level ceiling was reduced 12 inches. And the elevation of the lower level terrace was also reduced by three feet. This site plan shows the required setbacks for the property. In the Christmas Tree Hill area, the front yard setback is variable and is determined through the design review process. And a nine-foot, two, two-inch setback is what is proposed. The rear yard setback is 35 feet. And you can see the side yard setbacks vary. And the side yard setback for R1A is 10 feet. However, because of the increased side yard setback requirement, the setback is beyond this in certain parts of the structure. So on the northern portion of the site, the side yard setback varies from 10 feet up to 18 feet, six inches. And on the south side, it varies from 10 feet up to 19 feet. The applicant is proposing a structure that is contemporary in design, the, consistent with the Christmas Tree Hill guidelines, the, the building steps down the, the property following the natural slope of the site. And the proposed materials include board formed concrete, smooth gray stucco, vertical stained wood siding, and dark bronze, and unized windows and doors. And the picture on the left, this faces the south property. And this is facing the open space. And as you can see, there's a, large windows on this elevation to take advantage of the open space. And on the upper right hand is the elevation that faces the north side setback. And due to the proximity of this structure to the existing residence on 151, there is very limited windows proposed. There is only one Claire story window. And then the picture on the bottom right is adjacent to the roadway. And this, this is the only portions of the building that will be seen from the road. It includes the entrance, and then also the garage. The picture on the upper portion of the slide is the south elevation. Again, this is the elevation that is facing the open space. On the bottom is the east elevation, which faces the rear of the property. And then, again, this is facing the, the undeveloped parcel located to the east. The elevation on the top is the north elevate, elevation, which faces 151 Summit. And as you can see, there's just the Claire story window is the only window proposed. And there also are no balconies on this elevation, given the proximity. And on the lower portion of the slide is the west elevation, which faces the access road. And it is, includes the driveway and then the entrance. The upper floor plan includes the entrance area, which is 437 square feet. This includes the foyer, the staircase, a future elevator, and a coat closet. And the garage is 452 square feet. Also, on the upper level is a driveway for three additional parking spaces. The middle floor is 1,313 square feet. This includes the guest, the guest bedroom and bathroom, the living room, kitchen, and dining room, and also an outdoor roof deck is proposed. And this is on the rooftop of the lower level below. And the lower floor, floor plan is 1,222 square feet. This is the living quarters and includes two bedrooms and a bathroom, the master bathroom and master bedroom, in addition to the laundry, future elevator, closet, and closets. And there's also a deck proposed off of the master bedroom. And then from the hallway, there's a, a second deck with stairways down that lead to the lower landscaped area below. Since the study session, the applicant has developed a landscape plan. And the applicant met with the fire marshal prior to completing this landscape plan. The landscape plan includes drought resistant vegetation, and the majority of vegetation proposed is succulents. You can see there is a five-foot non-compostable, non-combustible zone. And there's very limited planting in this area. It consists solely of succulents. And these succulents are within steel or concrete planter boxes. The applicant is also proposing to plant 16, 15 gallon shrubs along the northern property boundary. And these have been strategically placed to provide screening between the existing residence at 151 Summit Drive and the proposed residence. As part of the project, the applicant is also required to develop a vegetation management plan. And this identifies defensible space that must be cleared. And this plan will be further refined during the, the plan check process, and also will be reviewed and approved by the town's fire marshal. And the applicant is required to provide, provide defensible space within 100 feet of the proposed structure. And this will include clearing on some of the adjacent properties. And in addition, any fire prone trees within 30 feet of the project site will be required to be removed, such as bay trees. The project includes three variances, which include a side yard setback on the north side to allow a 10-foot setback. And the required setback for this elevation varies from 10 feet to 18 feet, six inches. Also, a side yard setback on the south side is being requested to allow a six-foot setback. And the required setback for this elevation varies from 10 feet to 19 feet. And a lot cover, coverage variance to exceed the maximum lot coverage. 33.5 percent is proposed, whereas 25 percent is allowed. The applicant's design locates the residence closer to the southern portion of the site, since there's not an adjacent structure located on that property. And the, the special circumstances that exist for this project site is the lot size, the topography, and also its surroundings. The minimum parcel size for R1A parcels is 20,000 square feet. However, this parcel is closer to 8,000 square feet, which is more typical of parcels zoned R1. And R1 parcels have a side yard setback requirement of six feet and lot coverage of 40 percent. And this, this shows, the, the pink outline shows the building envelope when you take into consideration the required setbacks. And then the portions highlighted in yellow are the portions of the structure that are located within the required side yard setbacks. And these are the story poles. The picture on the left was taken from Summit Road, kind of at the, you know, as you're going down Summit Road. And you can see the portions that will be visible from the street is the, the garage and also the entrance. And then the picture on the right was taken on the Lower Summit Fire Road, kind of at the, the, the boundary of the property, looking in a, an easterly direction. And this picture was taken on the existing deck, looking in a easterly direction. And in order to approve the project, the Planning Commission may, must make the required design review findings, in addition to the required Christmas Tree Hill overlay design review findings, and also the variance findings as well. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the draft resolution approving design review application, PL 201976, and variance application, PL 201977, for the demolition of an existing residence and the construction of a new 2,972 square foot, three-story residence with a 452 square foot attached garage, and variances to exceed maximum lot coverage and reduce minimum side yard setbacks. And I'd also would like to note that a revised resolution was provided to you this evening. A condition of approval has been added related to easements. And specifically, the condition requires that a title investigation be done for two of the easements on the property, one located along the western portion of the site, and the other along the eastern portion of the site. And this condition has been added because it's somewhat unclear on who the beneficiaries are of this easement. So before a building permit is issued, the town is requesting that information be provided. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Very concise, as usual. Commissioners, to my right, questions for staff?
No questions at this time.
Martha, could you go back to the, I think, the first topo map and show just where that trail and that drainage swale is in relationship to the existing house?
So there's, probably the site plan's the best. So there's three, there's three easements. There is a six-foot easement within a portion of the northern, adjacent to the northern boundary. And this easement is for the benefit of 151 Summit. That, that residence was constructed on the shared property line. And so in order to allow the, the windows on that elevation and also utilities, this easement was granted for the benefit of 151. So there's no question, questions on, on that easement, who the beneficiary is. There is also an easement located along the western portion of the project site. And this easement is six feet. It's designated as a trail easement on the surveys. And of the six feet, three feet are on the project site, and then three feet is located on the, the site to the, to the west, which is 159. And in addition, there is also a six-foot trail easement along the entirety of the southern property boundary. And it is identified as a trail easement.
Can you point that out and where that, because it seems to run down the drainage swale? Can we identify that on the topo map, just out of a total understanding of what, what the property is like?
On the, on the aerial?
Yes.
There you go, to Bob's point on the topo map there at, is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. So it looks like that trail easement continues all the way down to Redwood? Is that essentially what happens here?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter?
Yes.
Is that easement then contiguous with the fire road?
So...
Does it run over?
No, no. So there, there is the...
The fire road is...
Yeah, the fire road is here.
...the dotted line going on.
Right. And then the trail easement is where?
On the road.
It's on the boundary itself.
Yeah.
It leads to the fire road.
No, it goes between the left-hand side of the lot there in that drawing? Go ahead.
Go back to the...
Go back to that one.
Well, this kind of shows it. So this is the existing...
Right.
...fire trail road that connects to, this is access through the open space. And the three, the six-foot easement, a portion is on, three feet is on this property, and then there's an additional three feet on 159's property. However, it doesn't correspond entirely with the roadway.
But you're also saying then it turns left and goes down?
Yeah. And just to be clear, there's no, there's no physical trail there today.
Right. But it leads towards the gate, is what I was asking, that gate for the fire road. I probably didn't say it properly. Well, but you can see the sign that says whatever.
Yeah, so there's two, there's two easements. The, there's one along the western portion of the property, which is six feet. And that, you know, is around kind of this area. And it abuts the existing fire trail, which provides access to, through the open space. And then in addition, there's another six-foot trail easement along the entirety of the southern property boundary as well.
Just having walked down to that trail with Craig Amos from 151, that's really, it shows it as a straight line, but it's a meandering trail that goes along the draw, the intermittent drainage slope down through there. And it's a fairly well-defined trail, although I can't imagine residents using that very much. That, that's absolutely true. It's a 51 percent grade. That's a steep climb. And then it may be, you know, used more by wildlife.
Yeah, there's, there is an evidence that it's been used.
Shortcut from Redwood to Summit? Is that what it is?
Downhill.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Margaret, do you have any questions for staff?
So who does commonly use...
Would you turn your microphone on then? Thanks.
Are those trails commonly used by resi, by residents or hikers? Or who uses those trails?
So it depends, you know, on what trails.
We'll have a chance to give...
You know, the, the trail that you can see through the open space, that is used by, by hikers. As far as, you know, the, the six-foot easement along the southern portion of the site, you know, there's no evidence that has, has been utilized by, by individuals in the past.
Just out of curiosity, does Corn and Madera maintain these roads and fire trails?
No.
No.
Roads.
So who, who maintains them?
So the, this road is on the, and the property owners can speak to this a little bit more, but I believe they were the most recent parties who actually maintained this portion of the road here, which you can see is fairly recently paved. So you're looking at property that is essentially 159 Summit, this road included. And to the left, obviously, the subject property, 155 Summit.
So is the road part of the ownership of the way, of that piece of property?
The properties, yes.
And that is an easement for the fire road. Ultimately, is there any special conditions for that road to access the fire?
Would you speak into the microphone, please?
Is there any special conditions to maintain access and, and like, a certain state of that portion of the road before it gets to the fire road? That's one of my questions.
Yes, and in fact, we've been in discussions in terms of access. Definitely access isn't an important part of this, where the fire department wants to ensure that they have access to that fire road, that ultimately, once you get past that gate, it's, it's Marin County open space.
That wouldn't be a planning consideration that's at the permitting level? Is that what I'm hearing? Or others?
It's, it's been dealt with.
Yeah, not our purview, but the, that used to have, Ruben can say, speak to it, but it used to have parking spots there that they have disallowed and now must be maintained. So there...
And the park, to clarify, the, there, the owner of 159 deeded basically four parking spaces, two to 151 and two to 155 Summit. Currently, parking is permitted on non-red flag warning days. And also, there has been a Knox box installed. And keys of the cars that park in those parking spaces have been placed in the Knox box in case there's ever a situation where the fire truck needs to get by. Because essentially, when cars park along this fence, there's not adequate space for a fire truck to get onto the, the fire road. And Ruben can speak in more detail to this if there are additional questions.
And what about garbage trucks? Because I was at the, the, the meeting where garbage collection was discussed.
Yeah, yeah, the owners can probably speak in more detail. It's my understanding that certain properties on Christmas Tree Hill have to pay more in garbage fees, based on the fact that not all the roadways are accessible. But the owners would probably have more to share on that.
The plan has...
And could you just bring up that slide with the, the colored lines on the variances, the pink lines and the yellow line?
Yes.
Yeah, that one.
Do you think you have another question, or are you just content with looking at it?
Could you define the pink line and the yellow space again?
Yeah, so the pink line is what the building envelope is when you take into consideration all of the required setbacks. And then the yellow demonstrates portions of the building that are proposed within the required setback. So again, a variance is being requested along...
For the yellow portion?
Yeah, so, and it's along the northern portion of the site. It's a variance to, up to 10 feet. And then on the southern portion, it's for a six-foot setback instead of what's required.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob?
I did, wanted to comment that the trail that I observed and, you know, walked down to, really, the new project has no impact on that at all. It's all outside of that. I think the only possible use by humans of that would be an emergency evacuation route if the roads were clogged, as we're worried they might be.
And I'd also like to point out, the existing residence is located 2.2 and a half feet from the southern property boundary. So a portion of that structure is within the six-foot trail easement, and the proposed residence maintains that, that six-foot setback.
Okay. I have a question for you. In that odd shape of the lot at, that dog leg that goes off to one side, I calculated about 1,500 square feet, which is kind of useless square footage for the project, right? So if I take that off of there, it ends up being that we have about 7,000 square foot of buildable lot, so to speak, for the property. And then that falls even under the other definition of 7,500 square foot we had for other changes in setbacks, I think. I forget how that...
Yeah, so if it's an R1, so that applies if it's an R1 parcel. If it's, if it's less than 7,500 square feet, then your side yard setbacks are five feet instead of six feet. And then your front yard setback is less. And then if it's greater than 7,500 square feet, it's six foot instead of the five-foot setback for the sites.
Got it. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Ruben up here?
No.
I had questions.
Oh, sure.
Okay. So, one is, what is the roof type on that flat roof? Is it, like, is it going to be tar and gravel or? Huh?
We can ask them. It'll be built up right there.
So it's built, so the reason I ask is, you know, that I read some stuff where they were asking if the flat roof is appropriate for Christmas Tree Hill. I'm more interested in it being in the wooie. Are flat roofs perform, do they perform well as far as in, in fire situations versus other?
Yeah, so what we look at in fire situations is actually the building material itself of what it's made of, and making sure that it meets fire resistant material. For example, either a comp shingle roof, standing seam metal roof, and so forth. So what the applicant proposes is we go ahead and evaluate and make sure it meets all California state required wooie products. And so what we've gone through this project, I've been working with the applicant and the staff, and all, everything in the materials that they're proposing all meet wooie standards.
Okay. Also, another interest, just, I'm learning. So with the flat roofs, you know, cleaning of leaves and stuff seems important for gutters. And usually on that, I find that the flat roofs, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what really is best for Christmas Tree Hill. The flat roofs seem much easier and accessible to clean and keep clear of debris. So in some ways, I would say the wooie...
It's definitely a lot safer for the homeowner or whoever goes up there to clean it. Because that's, especially when we have homes that are in a wooded environment, the biggest hazard is the amount of leaf litter that tends to accumulate, whether it's in the valleys or hips of a, of a structure, or anytime there's a dormer and there's a roof structure. Everything that accumulates there becomes that receptive fuel bed for, for embers to land and for fires to start. So a flat roof does become easier to kind of just get up there and blow it off with a leaf blower or with a broom.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. Okay, so then the other question I had. It was designated that other adjacent properties within 100 feet, they would have to come in and clear out any older brush? You know, it sounded like from the description. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, so, so every home, regardless of whether they're going through a new project or not, is required to maintain 100 feet of defensible space. So every property, if they remove anything that's dead, dying, or dry, that can be looked at as kindling, is we ask every homeowner to remove that. Or any kind of fire prone vegetation, so...
And does that include the county land as well?
Correct.
And is that an ongoing maintenance thing every year, or is that just a one time, because you got...
That's ongoing. That's a long, so anyone who lives within a hillside community has to maintain their property annually to defensible space. And we go out and we do both windshield inspections as we drive by. We do single individual inspections to make sure everyone's in compliance. The big thing with new projects, when they come in and they apply, we require a vegetation management plan. And part of that vegetation management plan lives with the building, throughout the life of the building. So anytime the building either changes hands, or it becomes non-compliant, we just come back and tell the applicant or the property owner, they've got to take the property back to its permitted state, which basically brings it back to what we approved as a vegetation management plan.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. I did also have one question for Martha. So when it, when it comes to the lot coverage...
Yes.
In general, lot coverage in most municipalities, what is the purpose of basically enforcing a certain percentage of lot coverage? What are we trying to get as a community by keeping part of it just flat and unbuilt, right? Like, I'm just, and then, and then it, based on that answer, I'm gonna...
So, lot coverage includes any structure...
I did also have one question for Martha. So when it comes to the lot coverage, in general, lot coverage in most municipalities, what is the purpose of basically enforcing a certain percentage of lot coverage? What are we trying to get as a community by keeping part of it just flat and unbuilt, right? Like, I'm just, and then based on that answer, I'm gonna.
So lot coverage includes any structure greater than, that has a height of three feet or more. So what you see in this particular site is, since it's a sloped lot, several components are counted towards lot coverage, which wouldn't be on a flat lot. It includes, you know, the driveway, portions of the driveway are included, portions of the landscaped area are included. And I think it adds up to like 7% of the lot coverage just comprised of those things.
Right, and it's about 8.5%, I think, of total that is the variance. So that's an interesting point. But I think more specifically, is it that, yeah.
Maybe I could try, you know, I think we, when we went through the exercise of changing the lot coverage requirements for R1 districts, when we went from, I think we had a sliding scale from 30% to 35%, and then we changed it to 40%, we had this, I think, a similar conversation. We were talking about what is the real intent of this regulation? From our perspective and the town's perspective, we sort of agreed it was related to somewhat of the mass or the amount of structure. It was amassing sort of conversation rather than sort of a permeable surface discussion, which at the time, I think there are some communities that use it sort of as one or both. But other communities also may have a separate just permeable surface requirement that's separate and apart from lot coverage. So it's really sort of the amount of structure or buildable area. And in our case, that's where we have the three feet or above. So we have something that it's actually above the ground that is occupying a particular lot.
And I wasn't aware of those other conditions from reading it. So I think that that was good. But the reason I actually asked is they have a huge deck that goes out over the second part of the amassing that's an outdoor space, right? And so in some ways, it's, that once again is functioning as almost like new lot, but it's built on top of the building. They're basically staggering it, right? So there's all these nuanced conditions in that, the topography, that steeped topography that they've negotiated that ultimately kind of goes back to saying they've made concessions that go back to it not really covering that much of the lot, right? Like, or like, you know, and I'm aware of Sausalito's, which also has a lot of, you know, hillside. And a lot of that is the hardscape because of the runoff, right? But then when you mitigate it from those points, you know, then you're getting back towards meeting the intent of why we were doing it in the same place. And it might have more pertinence in something like Madera Gardens versus, you know. So in making the variance and understanding why, you know, it makes a lot of sense here. It just helps to understand the bigger picture of why we asked for that percentage in the town anyway and like what the goal was. So that's why I asked, so, okay. Enough of everyone's, thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I think they probably have more square footage on the lot than is actually shown because it's an aerial view of that. And if you look at a lot, say this is the lot, but then it's at a 50-degree slope and you're aerial, the square footage of the lot is actually much greater as far as surface area. But the concern I have is Ruben's concern with fire protection. And, you know, I've always looked at the five feet, really pretty clear except succulents, 30 feet, you know, a greater degree of clearing, and then 100 feet, a certain degree of separation and get out all the dead things. But my understanding is when you're talking about a 51-degree slope, you almost have to triple, you know, those numbers from the standpoint of protection, especially in a draw like that, which could have the chimney effect as far as fire, you know, from below. And so do you take that into consideration when you're asking for, you know, the clearance? Or is it just, we leave it at 100 feet?
No, we look at topography. That's why we, the way our standards are written in our codes within the fire code, within the municipal code, we go anywhere from 30 to 150 feet, based on topography. So the steeper the slope, the more clearance you need, based on what, exactly what you were describing. That's why there's an undeveloped parcel below the applicant's lot that he's already agreed to go ahead and clear to create his added defensible space. And we've also gotten agreements from Marin County Open Space to allow the applicant to go onto open space land to go ahead and clear to create that defensible space.
Very good. Adam, I think that, would you clarify, the measurement of the lot, or square footage is based on the linear length of the lines down the hill? Is that the way they figure the calculation?
Correct.
Okay. Fellas.
Going back to Bob's question, the applicant has agreed to do the initial clearing. Will the applicant always be responsible for clearing the Marin County Open Space, the undeveloped lot, et cetera? Will that go on into perpetuity? Or it's just to get it started and to reach where it should be?
It's usually, what it goes is with Marin County Open Space, usually Marin County Open Space will allow homeowners to go onto their property to remove fire prone underbrush, basically all the kindling. And so it's in perpetuity for the open space side of it. With the undeveloped parcel below it, it's an agreement that he would have to work out with the initial homeowner, I mean with the property owner. Because it's actually the property owner's responsibility to clear it, not the applicant's responsibility.
Well, that's why I was asking. And I find it interesting that Marin County Open Space isn't responsible for cleaning up their own kindling, et cetera. But just because the applicant is going to clear the lower undeveloped parcel, and this is ongoing, let's say, once a year or once every two years, whatever is needed, is the applicant going to have to clean up the undeveloped lot? Or shouldn't the parcel owner, whether they develop or not, have to do it?
The parcel owner that owns the undeveloped parcel is responsible for clearing that lot. The applicant has been generous enough to go ahead and agree, from my understanding, to clear that lot for the initial clearing. And then the property owner is responsible.
Okay, fine, thank you.
And Ruben has to do all the inspections.
That's right, and good luck.
I told you there'd be questions for Ruben.
And hence the new proposed wildland fire. Okay.
So I had a more question, I'm sorry.
Really?
Yeah. Can you define beneficiary, like as far as, is that who the land rights go to? Or is it the person that ultimately, I'm a beneficiary because I can build my utilities in your property, like the?
So it's who benefits from that easement, so who's utilizing it?
Okay, thanks. And then the other one is, we've talked a lot about human pass, but, you know, is there any wildlife management or wildlife consideration and planning discussion within the town? Nope, only because Caltrains is building a bridge over 101 for animals to walk across, like.
We can leave that for another moment, please, if I may, because it's not a part of this, so.
I think it's a consideration up there what that easement would be used for if it's not human.
It's open.
Yeah, it's not something that's directly related to the findings for the design review or the variance. But just as information, it's not something that the town is actively involved in managing.
Okay.
Can I ask? You should be.
Okay, yes, Margaret.
Ruben, if it's appropriate, would you tell us your opinion of this project?
In my opinion of this project, it's from a fire perspective, the building, the new proposed building will make that portion of Christmas Tree Hill safer in the sense that you are now taking a 1930s structure that's completely wood, unprotected, that has non-wooie compliant products. And now you're putting in a structure that meets all of today's standards for homes that are within a hillside community. So it's actually making it safer. And it's actually improving it with a fire protection system within it, which is a full fire sprinkler system. So if anything should happen within the structure, it keeps it from getting out into the environment.
Thank you. And a question from Martha, which I just forgot. Okay, I'll remember it.
It'll come back to you.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask that the applicant make their presentation now. So whoever you have, architect and owner, please proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for considering our project. My name's Ted Beno, I'm with OXP Studio Architects. And I just would like to say hello again. I was here for the study session. I didn't meet you, Commissioner Lee, you were not here. But thanks again for considering the project. Starting out with this, I just really love this slide because the aerial view, I think, does a good job of depicting the property and how secluded it is. So this is the project site right here. The neighbor above is very elevated and has this dense vegetation between. The owner of the project, Yaron Palfee, has worked with Mr. Amos at 151 Summit, which is right here. And this is actually really the only close neighbor. As you can see, the rest of the site is surrounded by very dense trees and open space. Yaron has also met with the owners of 159 Summit, 136 Summit, and 145 Summit. Otherwise, like I said, completely surrounded by open space. And with the design, which steps down, the downsloping lot, no one other than 151 Summit will see the majority of this house and it will block no views. I also did want to address Chair Chase's concerns about the lantern effect and the windows. I think that this shows it along with probably the story poles, but the house is so down the slope and surrounded by trees that there will be no concerns with lantern effect and bothering of neighbors. Just real quickly, a slide to show you the uphill neighbor, 159 Summit, how much further up the hill it is. This is our location down here and the oak trees between. I went to see the story poles. I was really pleased when I saw the story poles. For me, they confirmed really that the majority of the building mass will not be seen from the street as all of the, the main part of the building is down the slope. And the modest single-story volume, which would be seen from the street, is right here. The roof is lower than the neighbor at 151 Summit. And we're not blocking the windows from 151 Summit. Again, during the study session hearing, I told Chair Chase that we would do an FAR comparison study for the neighborhood. This blue dotted line shows the whole neighborhood section that we took into account. These are 25 properties. And this is our project site right here. And then this is how it came out. So out of the 25 properties, we are seventh in FAR. And there are three other properties that actually have larger houses within the neighborhood. And this is the best information I could get from the assessor's website. So I actually don't think that the numbers of the neighbors are quite as high as they would be given the FAR requirements for Corne Madera because of double-height stairs and counting various types of spaces that might not be included in the assessor's information. We, during the study session hearing, Commissioner Metcalf suggested that she would be in favor of less mass and lower ceiling heights. So I wanted to show you the changes that we've made here. Up at the top, we reduced the foyer ceiling by six inches and the roof thickness by six inches. So this is 12 inches lower than it was the first time around. We took 12 inches out of the garage ceiling. We took 12 inches out of the lower floor ceiling. And then we reduced this terrace, the lower terrace, by about three feet. And we, as Martha said during her presentation, we actually shifted the building eight inches towards the street, which sort of reduces the perceived mass and pulls us in further away from the 30-foot maximum height limit. During the study session hearing, Commissioner Bandell suggested that we soften the architecture with landscaping. And we have Matt Kennedy, our landscape architect, developed this plan. And he worked with the fire marshal to achieve really the maximum amount of planning that we could do while meeting the fire ordinance. And Matt is here to answer any questions that you may have about the specific planting plan. These are some images of the plants selected for the project. As Martha said, all selected plants are drought tolerant and fire resistant. And all plants within the five-foot non-combustible zone are succulents. We were also asked about incorporating green standards. I have kind of a long list here of things that we plan on incorporating into the project. And I don't know that I'll go through them item by item, but we are looking at quite a few things, including materials, low water landscape plan. And we will also be considering photovoltaic panels and gray water system. But we'll be looking into that based on the site and the amount of sunlight that is available. We received positive comments from staff and the Christmas Tree Hill Association, recommending approval of the design review and variance, commenting on the grading and the cut of the hillside kept to a minimum. Perceived mass of structure is minimized. Roofs are utilized as decks, which I heard mentioned earlier, results in the outdoor space is not creating additional mass. The project follows all applicable policies, other than the variances requested. New house meets the needs of the applicant while complementing the surrounding neighborhood. And five new onsite parking spaces. This was from the Christmas Tree Hill Association comments. Neighbors support. House steps down the hillside, does not block views of neighbors out of view from neighbors and street. And then I wanted to point out that we have really put a lot of attention in the Christmas Tree Hill goals and design guidelines. And we are satisfying almost all of them, compensating for limited off-street parking, avoiding severe fire hazard, limiting drainage infrastructure. We have onsite stormwater storage, retention of single-family residential character. We only have the one unit. Preservation of natural topography. The new building footprint is over the previously disturbed portion of the site and very limited grading outside of the footprint. And minimizing the impact on surrounding properties. We've discussed this quite a bit. And really, the only, and the only goal that has been raised is whether or not the design is in harmony with the cottage character of Christmas Tree Hill. And we want to just point out that there is a wide variety of styles on the hill with other contemporary homes, flat roofs, and therefore, our project will not set a new precedent. Additionally, it should be taken into account how secluded the property is. We've brought in some photos of other contemporary flat roof structures within the neighborhood. This is 150 Edison. This is 52 Summit Drive. 273 Summit. 210 Morningside Drive. And so again, we just want to point out that while questions have been raised about the cottage character of Christmas Tree Hill, the overarching theme here is one of an extremely private, secluded property and a design that achieves all other goals of the Christmas Tree Hill guidelines. We listened to planning commissioner's comments at the study session and modified the design in response to them. And this design complies with floor area ratio, front setback, rear setback, and building height. There are true hardships for this challenging property, primarily pertaining to the one R1A zoning, which is designed for a lot 2.4 times as large. zoning, which is designed for a lot 2.4 times as large. This house would comply if the zoning were R1, which is more typical for a lot of this size. Therefore, the variances for side setbacks and lot coverage are justified. And I just wanted to point out one thing here. When you look at the setbacks, the required setbacks, you're left with less than 17 feet wide, which would be, you know, extremely difficult to design a house within. And then I just have slides of the drawings, in case you have any specific questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Before you go away, Phyllis, do you have any questions for the architect?
No, it's a beautifully designed house. I think I told you that the last time you were here. I like it. I don't like the location. I'd hate to drive up and down there every day, but if you want to, be my guest.
Okay.
I...
We'll get into discussion on the road.
Of height, yeah, roads, yeah. But you mentioned the Christmas Tree Hill guidelines, and I see where you met most of them, and I would hope, and I'll bring this up a little bit later in depth, that I think it's time that we, as a commission, with the staff, have a discussion as to whether the guidelines written so many years ago should evolve in today's world and defining a cottage. Because to me, a cottage is something you see in the Cotswolds in England, or maybe the original Levitt houses that were built after World War II. And I, driving around yesterday, there are not many that look like cottages up there anyway, so I think we've got to do this so it doesn't seem like we're ignoring guidelines, we're working... This house fits the lot. It works well. It certainly meets a lot of needs. I like the idea of the three offsite parking spaces in addition to the garage. I like the idea of the roof and having the terraces there. It's just very well done, and I certainly could support the findings.
Thank you. Dr. Bob?
Yeah, I agree that the house, I think, will work on that lot. I was curious about the stormwater storage. How is that set up?
Yeah, I'm glad I have the drawings here. So, if you flip to the civil plans... Actually, I'm going to go back to my plans for one second. Part of the purpose for this lower terrace is to enable that. We designed this lower terrace not just for outdoor space, but also for a place to put fill material and for a place for the onsite storage. So, here we are, C2. I don't know if I can zoom in here, but I guess you can see it right here. So, the water is collected from the roof and then goes through solid pipes, I guess primarily on this side of the building, to a water storage pipe that is located underneath this terrace. And then, there is a detail of that here. So, it stores the water, and then as it gets full, it dissipates it slowly.
Okay. And the... Is there a requirement for solar? I think it may be difficult because of the siding and the trees and everything, but is that a requirement that we have now?
Well, the... Under the building code, I think all new dwellings are going to have that requirement, although I imagine there are some cases in which it may not be possible due to whatever orientation or the shading or whatnot. Perhaps you have some additional response to that, but...
Yeah, I don't yet know about the new energy code on that, but I do know that this isn't going to be... It'll have to be analyzed, because there's so many trees. So, I think there are hours of the day in the morning where it gets direct light, and then very soon after that where it loses it. So, I don't know how the building code is going to address properties where it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, I know it's not clear. I agree. Charles?
So, you said one of your features was eco-stucco. What makes it eco-stucco versus normal stucco? Just...
Yeah, it's funny. I was looking at that earlier today, trying to figure that out. But it claims it's a sustainable material, and it has a high lime content, so I don't know too many details on that.
It's a branded eco, and it needs some kind of lead or other...
Yeah, it's a company that's located in Santa Fel. I actually did some of it at my house. It's actually beautiful material on top of being sustainable.
Okay. Thanks. And then, the only other thing is, with the solar, because if it's going to... If the code requires it on all houses, new house moving forward, is solar part of basically a design consideration? Is something that I like... Or is that completely different, and it's only energy systems, and therefore, we have no purview? Because we do talk about it a lot when they are proposed. Because in this instance, the lighting that you were describing kind of talks about up above the cars, so could it be basically like a roof over those three carports or something? And then, it's a design consideration as much as anything else. So, I just wanted to kind of ask the question, but not really expect an answer, to kind of get people to think about whether we really need to dig into it right now or not.
I can say that in some communities that it is overriding any design considerations at this point in time. San Francisco, you put solar panels on your houses, as many as you want, and nobody can do anything about it. I don't know where it stands here.
Well, I mean, if somebody is proposing it on an existing home or separate and apart from a structure, it... There is no ability for the town to have design review. Your question's a little bit different, so if they're now...
After they do the study, could they come back and just present that, if that's something we'd be interested to see?
No, I mean, there's no requirement. I was just trying to explain that the current procedures, it's by state law, that it's sort of one of those things that goes straight to a building permit. There's no design considerations. That can be considered under a separate solar permit. We see this happening quite a bit, actually, right now. We're seeing a lot of solar permits. But I think your question is a little bit different. I know we did discuss it, for example, when we talked about the Robin Drive subdivision that did come up for consideration in terms of glare and whatnot, and trying to use a certain...
Because you have a sloped neighbor.
I understand the question. I don't have a great answer for you, but I think, you know, for consideration in the future, we can talk about it. Obviously, it's not, you know, it's not something that's proposed as part of this project right now, but, you know, we could... We just don't have an answer for whether or not it's going to be part of the project or not at this point.
Would panels be considered sort of like chimneys or fans, or just something that's on a roof that isn't... Doesn't fall under height limitations and whatnot? So, I think if we were to do panels on this project, they would sit on the roof surfaces. I don't think we'd create an additional overhang for it. And they would be turned... They would be angled away from the uphill neighbor?
Right, towards the...
Yeah. So, I don't know if... How you think about those in the planning code, but they would be elements sitting on the roof.
Right.
And I also appreciate you just kind of talking openly.
Yeah.
You know, because then you get an understanding about what the implied impacts might be, and whether it was something that could be...
It's not something that we have reviewed from a planning perspective in the past. I can tell you on the existing, the Corbin area in... Sorry, the Suites Hotel, they're going to... Came in and put panels all along that roof of that, and that wasn't reviewed under the design review, don't believe.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
So...
Thanks.
Okay, Margaret?
I just have a passing concern at this point, I think, about this idea of the cottage style that's brought up for Christmas Tree Hill. And it's kind of... I read what was in the package, these notes, email notes and the letter. It sounds like the Christmas Tree Hill group is kind of at a low point right now, and maybe they're indecisive about what they want or how they're growing. But what I can see from what you said is, the house clearly isn't, as Phyllis put it, the Cotswold-style kind of cottage. And the only thing that you've done is shown us pictures of other non-Cotswold-style cottages. So, I think just as a consideration for the whole planning commission, if we say, okay, it's again, it's another growing trend that we're allowing towards not what Christmas Tree Hill design was supposed to be. And I mean, it's okay with me, but I think we have to consider that, that Christmas Tree Hill is a design review or standards is at a low point right now, and we would just be saying, that's okay with us.
Right. We'll take that up as a discussion item.
Peter?
Is this a question? I don't want to get into a discussion.
I just want to clarify one thing on this. The guidelines are just that. They're not ordinances that are to be followed. And I've been on the planning commission for about eight years, and there've been several homes that have been remodeled or new homes built. And I can tell you right now, I haven't seen one that looks like a cottage of any definition. Most of them that are being built at this time are more modern and following some of the slides that we saw. That's why I think we have to look at, what, 30, 40-year-old guidelines and make sure... I think it's more important that we look at, you know, what the traffic flow is and all those other parts of the guidelines, than worry about what was said as design, which isn't existing anyway.
Fair enough. All right. Thank you. Does that help, Margaret? To some extent? Oh, okay.
Can I say one thing?
So, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, just one tiny thing. I do want to say I did purposefully just show other modern houses in the neighborhood, but I really agreed with what you said earlier, which is, my feeling driving through that neighborhood was that there wasn't a distinct cute cottage quality to it. It's all over the map, really, in my opinion.
Which makes it interesting.
Yeah.
Should be.
All right, we can take that up.
I still want to say something big.
We won't. So, from the applicant's standpoint, does anybody else want to make a presentation or say anything?
Just a moment.
Just the right thing to say.
Did you want to ask anything about garbage collection? Or was that...
That's why I shut mine off.
Yeah, you may want to say that. I see that you have garbage bins set aside on the plan, but Margaret did ask about that, so please, if somebody wants to address that, that might be helpful.
Do you want to...
I'm not addressing the garbage. I have a couple of comments.
Okay, we'll get to the public comment shortly.
Yeah, I don't, because I don't know. I just thought the one of them could come. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, then, that will call an end of the presentation, and now we'll say...
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Okay. Well, I didn't know the applicant was going to make a statement. Does the applicant want to say something?
Um...
No. Yeah, I don't... So, you can... We'll go to public comment now, and anybody that would like to contribute to this discussion, we would like to hear from you. So, please step up to the microphone.
My name's Bob Amos, and I thank the Commissioners for allowing me to make a public comment. I own 151 Summit Drive, so I obviously have a vested interest in this project. First, let me commend Mr. Palfee. He has been extraordinary in working with me, keeping me posted from the very inception. And I built my house in 1995, and was hoping that would happen, because I tried to do the same with my neighbors. But I wanted the Commissioners to know that he's been just outstanding. The other thing I would like to say is that I support this application, this project, completely. It's not perfect, but neither was my project when I built it. No such thing as perfection. So, it's in the best interests of Christmas Tree Hill, and I believe Corder Madera. And I just want you to know, 100% support for Mr. Palfee. So, thank you.
Very nice, dear. Thank you very much. Who else? We can get somebody off the street if you'd be... So, we have some viewers here, but nobody else wants to say anything, so we'll say end the public comment, and we'll bring it back up here to Adias. And I'll start with comments over here. Phyllis, or discussion points?
Well, as I said earlier, I like the design. I think it is well-placed on a parcel. That's a difficult parcel. I don't think anybody would deny that. I appreciate the changes that were made after the workshop we had. I think a great effort was made by both the owner of the property and the architect to meet some of our concerns, and I can make all of the findings.
Very good. All right. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, I also like the project, and believe I can make the findings for the variances and the lot coverage. I did have a question for Mr. Palfee, if you would like to respond to that. And it's... I want to congratulate you for taking on the adjoining properties from the standpoint of thinning, because what you'll end up doing is making that, the whole neighborhood, much safer from the standpoint of fire. But I did have a question as to whether you had approached the owner of 145 about potentially purchasing that property and merging it with your own, so that you would then have control over the property in the future to maintain it as defensible space.
We can break the rules and sort of get you up there if you want to respond to that. You don't have to respond to it.
But he has to do it at the microphone.
We have to step up to the microphone, yeah.
To answer your question, I did have a discussion with the owner of the 145 property, but he did not... He did not address purchasing the property, or making an offer, or anything of that sort. It was more as a follow-up to our meeting with Ruben, and the realization that we need to address the defensible space. I realized that if I knock on somebody's door tomorrow and say, okay, great, now we need to do something about it, it's going to surprise them, and it's basically not the right thing to do. So, when I approached him, he was... He told me that he actually wanted to do it for a while, and he was happy that I'm going to do something, and he offered to share part of it. And that was the extent of the conversation. But as far as purchasing the property, I did not have any discussion with him. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I can understand that, and that really has nothing to do with the approval on the project. In looking at the lots, 145 doesn't have direct access to this, and of course, it borders the lower part of your property, and you would be able to merge it with yours, whereas he would not be able to merge it with his, I don't believe, because of the way they only touch at a corner. So, it seems like it would be a no-brainer to try to do that if he was willing to do that, and you were willing to do that, and it would ensure that you would be able to maintain that defensible space going forward. So, that's my only thought on it.
Okay. Thank you for answering the question.
Thank you.
All right. So, Charles, any thoughts you...
Yeah, so I can make all the findings, but I... There's a couple of discussion points that I wanted to... So, one is, I wasn't going to bring it up, I was going to bring it up to staff afterwards, but this idea of joining the lots, basically, there were a couple other ones, and I think as we move forward, if they're landlocked, but we can basically merge them moving forward for the housing element and for ADUs and that kind of thing, like, I was going to suggest maybe exploring, like, what the possibilities would be, because maybe he doesn't want to do it, but the downslope neighbor could also do that, and it would allow them to basically advance a project beyond what they're currently constrained to in an advantageous way and utilize that land. Okay? Okay. Back. I also really like and think that the six-foot fence that's right up against the road, basically, by creating those three parking spots and opening it up, even though there'll be a building there now, it's just really opening up the streetscape, and I think that's a really nice improvement to the neighborhood. And then I want to talk about the Christmas Tree Hill. I had a note, cottage was just a budget of an era. It wasn't a style up there. And basically, what we're really talking about is a custom home zone, like, design style, where all the, you know, they basically reflect each contemporary, you know, interest of the people when they, when they develop or redevelop a home up there. And so, yeah, it becomes very mixed. But cottage was more of a size, and I think an impact that maybe they were getting at than an actual stylistic thing. And as we determined, it might not even be appropriate for our current concerns, like, from a safety standpoint, that ultimately, I think, everything I've ever learned is that safety trumps aesthetics when it comes to ADA, or egress, or those kind of things. And so, fire is a huge consideration, just like seismic, and that those should be considered. And the types and styles of building that would be the safest up there for the individual and the overall neighborhood should be considered, and should be allowed at the expense of whatever, you know, because Kyoto Tower, Towers burned down 50 times, so maybe they should rethink, you know, how it's built, right? So, I guess those were my talking points, that I just wanted everyone to consider as we move forward.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Margaret?
I appreciate the most is what Ruben said, is that it's going to be, make the whole area safer. And I think that, in that location, is my primary concern, because I think it's a very dangerous place to live in this day and age. That's my feeling. I have a problem with the idea of this cottage style in Christmas Tree Hill, as far as the size of the building goes. I think, no matter what the style, it's bigger than a cottage. And however, because Christmas Tree Hill doesn't seem to have any representation here now, I think that the safety issue trumps...
I agree.
...trumps everything. And if this applicant is willing to do that amount of work to make his neighborhood safer, I say we need more people like him.
And how do you feel about making the findings for the project?
I could make them with reservation, as far as the existing neighborhood, you know, area goes, the style of the existing neighborhood. And I think there are cottages, or small homes, I don't know how else to describe them, that we've approved and we've seen. They are on the lower portions of the area. But as I said, I'd make the finding, because I think overall, it's better for the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter, may I...
Okay.
Two points. This new home is close to the architecture of the two addresses we've been discussing all night that are contiguous, 151 and 159, I think it is, across the street. I mean, it's similar architecture, and I went back once again, and I've seen it so many times, I sometimes forget, I looked once again about roof forms. And, you know, we are all talking about and noticing about the gabled hip and shed forms, et cetera, et cetera. But there's a second sentence to 2A. Flat roofs are discouraged except in a small, non-visible area. This certainly, when you consider its zone to be 20,000 square, you know, and it's, what, 8,000 and something? It's small, and it's not going to be noticed. It's, so, it's going to be non-visible. I think it does meet the requirements. I know it's really pushing it, and I'm showing my political background, but...
Great.
I think we can say we're going along with it.
Okay. I think that, from my viewpoint, the fact that you lose a 1,500 square feet of this lot, and it drops it down to about 7,000, and that the typical R1 restrictions would apply to this lot, and then putting this less-than-3,000-square-foot house on it is, I think, a perfectly sane and appropriate use of a property that needs development in a significant way. Clearly, the work that you've put into developing this project is extraordinary. I pity you for trying to build this house up there. It's just going to be a son of a gun, so... But I think that it's a very pertinent style to our time, and it's appropriate to go ahead and put a three-bedroom house up there. I think it's great to challenge the architecture and keep it small, hunkered down on the hill, and I think it'll be a good addition and a forthwith, forward-looking architecture up there. It's an extraordinary challenge. So, I wholeheartedly make the findings for the variance on this, because I think that's the only way the lot will get developed appropriately, and you've created a design that fits the hillside, and that's the best thing up there from my perspective. So, we have in front of us a Modified Resolution Number 20-001. Who will make a motion?
In the matter of Design Review Application PL-2019-0076, and Variance Application PL-2019-0077, for the demolition of an existing residence and construction of a new 2,972-square-foot three-story residence with a 452-square-foot attached garage at 155 Summit Drive, Resolution Number 20-001.
Second?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Vandell?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
Margaret, I mean Martha.
The Samuels are getting to you, didn't they?
Yeah.
Problems with those N names.
As far as the appeal, following action by the Planning Commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the Town Council within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the Planning Department, and a $300 filing fee is required.
Thank you very much.
Take a break.
We'll take a quick break here while the room clears. All right. What was the special?
The special meeting was December, yeah. The council meeting in December, special meeting that was called because they needed to determine if we were going to have an election, since there were two candidates for two positions. They were going to be either appointed, but there was a decision made on a two-to-two vote that there should be an election, because that's the democratic process. And to not hold the election, you had to have a majority vote, and the third vote was not there. So, rather than spend $15,000 on the new town hall, we're having an election.
And I hope we're going to see the two candidates who should have just been appointed do a lot of campaigning. I expect you to walk precincts and do all these things to make those two particular council members who insist on an election happy.
I would avoid comment on this one.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, I'll be attending the Marin Women's Political Action Committee debates in San Rafael.
Oh, good luck.
Okay. Well, that does it for Commissioner Reports. Is that correct? Nobody else has anything else to...
Our, not our state senator, thank God, but Weiner, the state senator, has brought back SB 50. It is haunting us once again. There are some changes which I really don't think do a lot for towns and cities. It's basically that towns and cities will be able to make some of their own decisions, as long as they're in line with the states. So, great, we can ride into our own ordinances, and I am really sorry to say that our state senator, Maguire, is going to back it. But I think we really have to watch it and see what's happening, and I really applaud the idea that this group that Adam is a part of is working on standards for the county, because I think if it's, 10 of the cities, not San Rafael and the county, that's looking at setting some of the standards throughout the county, may help all of us in what's going on, because more and more control is being taken away, and, you know, all this talk about single-family residences, and R1, and R1A, it's not going to exist anymore unless we do something.
Okay. I think I read in the same day that came out, that the committee men might dump that bill if they don't get it out of committee, so...
Well, we always hope.
Anyway. Adam, what are your things to report?
I guess just that the second reading of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance will be next Tuesday at the Town Council, so if that gets approved, it will go, the new ADU ordinance would go into effect 30 days from Tuesday, so February 21st. In the meantime, obviously, all the other ADU regulations have gone into effect starting January 1st, 2020. So, just a note on that. I know, other than that, I don't. I hope everyone had a good holiday, good New Year's, and enjoyed some time off. And I know, I know I did. I wanted to mention that while we did have a tentative agenda item for Tuesday, January 28th, we actually are not going to be reviewing the 801 Tamalpais Drive Lazy Boy Furniture Design Review Application at that meeting. We don't have any meetings, I'm sorry, any items scheduled for the 28th at this point in time. The next meeting, which I will, I'm happy to report, there was a notice that went out today, and some information next door on January 30th, which is a Thursday, there will be a community workshop for the town hall remodel and addition project. You know, I think this is akin to a meeting that might happen prior to a preliminary hearing for any other development project that the Commission might see, so perfectly welcome for any of you to attend, as sort of a information gathering session, and to participate even in certain capacity, obviously, though, without making any statements that would sort of, without the benefit of public hearings and public comment, because this is a project that ultimately will be in front of the Planning Commission for its review and comment. The idea would be after the community workshop on the 30th, that some, the architect for the project would come before the Planning Commission in a preliminary hearing at the end of February, and that's sort of a tentative schedule at this point. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. And other than that, we do have, and we can move to, this is more the next item, but I think it would be worthwhile, given there's been a few things brought to my attention. We had a conversation about ridgeline development, and whether to put that on a future agenda. I know Commissioner Bundy has wanted to discuss issues related to tree permits and tree removal for certain types of tree, and whether that should be revisited. And then we've talked this evening about Christmas Tree Hill design guidelines as well. So there's an opportunity, I guess, for at least discussion, depending on how much sort of analysis and background you want from staff, but at the next meeting, we could maybe take on one of these, or at least get a sort of a sense of priority from the Commission in terms of not discussing each of the topics tonight, but maybe a priority of topics to bring back, staff could bring back for discussion in the future.
That's all good stuff. Things we need to talk about. Bob?
Yeah, I would like to put that on the agenda, the ridgelines, you know, what other towns are doing, as well as maybe a review of views, view ordinance, primary views and such. And specifically in regard to the tree issue, my goal would be to see liquid amber trees, which have been planted in the median strips in some developments, particularly Mariner Cove, you know, be declared invasive, not invasive necessarily, but undesirable trees, the same way moderate pine, and acacia, and eucalyptus, which can be taken out without permits, be able to be taken out without permits, or certainly at least without an arborist fee. I'm not sure if a permit is required to take out the eucalyptus tree, or, but I know an arborist report is not necessary. So, for future items.
Also, a couple times now, we brought up the solar panels. Could we just have a brief, like, you do some research and come back to us about whether ultimately there is enough, whether that should be a design consideration for new build, or like, what the definite, how that falls, and how much oversight, or whether we just don't see them on where they're even going to place them, or how we should represent it moving forward, would be very helpful for me.
Perhaps also in regard to solar panels, at what point would we, you know, not require solar panels to be put on a new home if the solar benefit is marginal at a certain degree?
Yeah, and, so, we can, we can take that one offline, but I think the short answer is, it's really the building code at this point is going to determine that. So it's not going to, it's going to be taken out.
State code, state energy code.
But, okay, yeah, so I have ridgelines, liquid, you know, the liquid ambers, the solar panels, and how that fits into design consideration. Views, views will be discussed at the council level sometime before the end of March, similar to how the design review threshold was discussed at the council level back in the fall. So, heads up on that, but some of that will be, anyways, I don't want to get too far into it. I can come back and talk a little bit about that as well, maybe prior to the council meeting, or even afterwards as part of a report. Okay. And then, you know, I think what would be helpful would be to sort of get some consensus from the Commission in terms of which ones are priorities, and which ones, just, you know, in terms of actually getting to these, and actually, if there's an amount of analysis or work to be done, you know, which ones would you like to see first, I guess, is my question, on the, on an agenda for discussion. And it's not, I don't want to get into a discussion of these topics now, we can't do that, but just, we can throw some of these on, and maybe, maybe even if we throw them on an agenda, you can, we can have a discussion about how, how much detail you want, and what sort of questions we can answer for you, but some of them are a little bit...
That's the best way to do it.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so maybe if you don't, if that, if it works, we can use the next meeting for some of these discussions on, you know, on how far, what questions should be answered, and how far maybe some of the issues in some direction from the Commission in terms of some of the ideas that maybe Commissioner Bundy has mentioned, or some of the questions that, you know, Commissioner Lee has raised about solar. I can probably have an answer for that at the next meeting. And then, some of the other things, I can put them on ridgelines, we can get into just a, maybe a broader conversation about it, and some direction at the end of that, with an idea that you'd give staff some direction about how to move forward with those discussions. Does that sound...
Yes. From my perspective...
So I have, are we going to discuss what topics to talk about, or you're going to...
No, I, so I, right now, I'm trying to get a list, so I would put on each...
So I have something to add to the list.
Okay.
How, when a lot, when a permit is given for a building on a lot, and then the lot changes in some way, either by an accessory dwelling unit...
Oh, Mike, please.
Or landscape changes, or some other change. How much change is necessary before it... Or landscape changes or some other change, how much change is necessary before it comes back to the Planning Commission?
Okay, we can talk about that. So like a permit amendment application type of thing?
Yeah, and how many times does a permit get reapproved before it has to get built?
Can you try to clarify that one a little bit?
Well, as I understand it, when someone gets a permit, it's something is approved by the Planning Commission, and then they apply or they just have that approval. And then a year goes by or two years go by, maybe they're getting money or something. How many, and as I understand it, it's automatically reapproved, their permit, before the building starts?
Renewed, you're.
Renewed, okay.
Okay.
How many times does a, is a renewal allowed?
So renewal policies.
So the conditions of maintaining a building permit and for how long and what keeps it in play?
And then if, if in fact, the.
Discussion of renewal policies.
The lot changes in some way, by an ADU being added, by landscape, by trees being cut down, by whatever, does that change the character of the permit that's been given?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different topics there. Maybe it's more about a process conversation about, we could have. I'll throw that on the agenda if that's something that we want to discuss further, but I don't want to, you know, there is a process in our rules and procedures, and I don't know, Phyllis, do you want to? I could talk to you, you know.
I get what she's asking, and it's about the procedure of permits and what keeps them valid, what makes them invalid, and what makes them require reapplication or re.
So we can, so the way I see that, it would be a discussion of the procedures regarding permit renewals and amendments to permits. That's how I title it. Okay.
Phyllis?
On that one, it's also what starts looking at an amendment. I mean, of the things that you mentioned, one that I would be concerned about that you didn't mention is the topography of the lot. If, you know, something is approved and then the next thing you'd say it's on a hillside and you see it's all cut into and changed, you may want to look at. But if I remember correctly, in Belvidere, they, at least they used to have an ordinance or a rule that if building was not started within three years or four years, I forget what the time limit was of receiving the building permit, it was null and void, it was not renewed annually into perpetuity.
Belvidere has the most restrictive, and if you're given a certain amount of time to build it, and if you don't complete it, you're all luck.
Yeah.
Completed or started?
But that is, but I also think.
Completed within a prescribed amount of time.
Or even started. There was a concern about people got permits up and then sat back and didn't do anything for whatever reason. But also, you mentioned in the beginning, but it didn't make your list when you wrote it down, about the Christmas Tree Hill, of how we could start a process to get the Christmas Tree Hill people to take a look at what they've gotten, how it can be brought into 2020.
From what I read, it was almost like they wanted punt and defer back to the Primary Planning Commission to take ownership of that again.
It wasn't the plan, it was the group that did it because they weren't happy about what was going on there. And it didn't go, the planning commission, it went to the council.
Yeah, let's, it's getting a little unwieldy. I mean, I think there's a process in our rules and procedures about how to put something on the agenda by a commissioner or whatnot. I'm trying to sort of, it hasn't quite been followed, but I'm trying to pull it, so I'm trying to take a shortcut and just get some ideas out there. But I think the real, what we need to do is, you know, get some direction from the commission about priorities and specific questions that you want answered. So without, we don't need to do that now. What I'll do is, is I'll put some of these topics on the next agenda for discussion, but I'm going to ask you for either, you know, what further information you would like regarding this topic to be discussed, and in what priority, like, which ones should staff focus on first?
And it will be on the meeting for the 28th.
Twenty-eighth.
Good. I do think, Peter, that, and I've discussed this with Adam, that when we have no item on the agenda, no application, or if it's something that will take a short time, that we should use that time for us to talk about things we normally can't, because, you know, it's 10 o'clock at night.
Right. And I would say, you know, some of these, they may not, the commission may say, this is not, this is, this could be a one-on-one conversation with a particular, if it's not of interest to the entire commission, it could, you know, I'm happy to deal with these other questions that commissioners may have in one-on-one conversations with staff and do it that way. But if there's things for the, you know, commission from a policy perspective or changes they'd like to see, whether it's a process started for Christmas Tree Hill guidelines or the liquid amber trees, ordinance amendments, things like that, that's, those are the types of things that I think, you know, sort of start to set an agenda for staff to be working on and filling in some of the future holes in the schedule.
Bob?
Yeah, Adam, I don't think any of these are particularly, you know, burning topics that need to be addressed immediately, and I would leave them to the discretion of the planning staff as to bringing them forward when there's time in the evening to discuss them. I would not necessarily favor bringing them, try to bring them all out at a meeting when we don't have another agenda item, because I'd like to give the planning staff a break and save the town some money by, you know, not meeting if we don't have an applicant before us. But these, I think, are, you know, relatively small items that could be added on.
Okay.
All right. We're going to cut that discussion to a short, not so short, minutes for the meeting. Does anybody have any changes for the December 10th, 2019 meeting?
No, I'll move those minutes as written.
Second?
Okay. Voice vote, ready?
Aye.
Okay. Then move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.